Everybody.
When they turn their cameras on, you will.
Hi Chad.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks for sending me the link again.
Hi Eric.
You're welcome.
Hey.
How's it going?
How's it going?
What's the, what's the estimate? What, what do you guys think? How much time?
Eight?
Yeah.
Eight, sorry, seven forty-three.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Long at all. I think they can get through this in like twenty minutes.
I'm thinking maybe our D A discussion might hold it up a little or no?
There's gonna be ten minutes in the front of the meeting on the African American Museum.
Okay, so thirty-five minutes.
And Jim talking about preparedness month.
Okay, now we're in twenty minutes.
And people coming in opposition to the property maintenance code because they got wowed up about it.
Two hours.
Jim says ten P M. for the record.
Who does? Jim McGuire?
How are you doing Tom?
Good, am I good?
Um.
You're a little off-center.
Yeah.
I gotta straighten that. I'm actually running two meetings right now, so just trying to get on because that's wanting me on a little early. So if I was like this, I'm good.
You look fine. Um, yeah. You have the light on as well? And stand.
That light's behind you.
Uh, that's, that's at home. I'm in my office.
Gotcha. Okay. Alright, yeah, um, you might during the meeting, if it gets dark out, I have to turn on the lamp behind me.
Okay, yep.
Great.
Alright.
Alright, Tom.
Hey, we'll see you at seven.
Yep.
Alright, I'm gonna say goodbye again. I'll be back in five.
Steph, is your son home?
Michael's, no, Michael stayed down in Temple, but my stepson Rafe is home for the rest of the semester.
Oh really? Cause he was in the regular dorms, right?
He's in a dorm and his roommate wasn't there and there's just not a lot they can do, you know? He doesn't really have a way to make friends because he doesn't have a roommate. They can't really do anything. All the classes are online.
We're going.
Are you done? Are both boys home?
Oh yeah.
Oh God. I'm sorry, Eric, I'm sorry.
Remember I told you, you gotta start checking my bottle I carry around with. It's not, it's not gonna be water.
It's hard, it's hard having them back under the roof, especially with all the like technology requirements. Sam had a good first day of senior year today.
That didn't go, that didn't go well either?
No, he did okay. The upper Dublin was really prepared, like really prepared. They've been working on this forever. Third period, complete breakdown. Chad, something happened to the internet at the school. Third period, everything went down. They, they sent the teachers home. The teachers all started teaching from home beginning in fourth period and I guess everything, you know, went back up, but it's like one of those classic examples where you like prepare for something and until you actually put however many teachers in a building, all going online at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, that could have a lot to do with it. I mean, but they should be able to handle it. I'm assuming they got a good connection, but that's just the point of failure though. Having everybody teaching online virtual because it all it takes is one device to go down, like your main connection in and everybody.
That's what must have happened.
They're better off, yeah, they're better off sending everybody home to teach from there. This way, if, you know, Suzie's internet got lost, at least it's only her class that's been affected.
Not everybody.
Exactly.
Yeah, my neighbor is a German teacher. I was talking to him and it was like epic failure. I felt so bad for him.
My, my wife's day must have went real well. I think she's drinking right now, her first day.
God bless her Eric. I wish, I wish I could be drinking with her.
She was like one a day, one a day, but they got through it.
Well, I love to have a glass of wine every night. There's nothing wrong with that at all.
Hmm. We were shot. Or two. Yeah.
One of my neighbors, one of my really close friends and neighbors, Lisa, you might remember my friend Beth across the street, the one who does Stella and Dot. She was in a terrible bicycle accident. And she has no use of her left arm and only ten percent use of her right arm. So like, we're all like, all of us friends have been chipping in to try to figure out how to help her. So after my meeting, we're all gonna get together to talk, like plan meals. She's got four kids. She has to have surgery.
Immune at least.
I can't hear Lisa.
Do they expect her to recover? Is this just all?
Yeah, I think she'll recover. It's just like the left arm is a broken, like a shattered elbow. She has to have surgery to repair. And her right side is a rotator cuff issue. My God, my kids are loud out there. Anyway, that's my plan after the meeting is to just go have some wine with the ladies and divvy up all the responsibilities. Faking COVID, twenty-twenty.
I know, but still, but it's still happening. That's the crazy part.
I feel like it's just every day there's something new. Every day there's some other crazy thing going.
Yeah, it just keeps getting more and more complicated instead of getting easier.
I know.
Steph, who's supposed to be on from P D?
Who's gonna be on? The chief?
Yeah.
I think so. I think, I'm pretty sure I talked to him earlier.
Steph, I don't know if I told you this, Kyle's friend, um, he went to college, he was there for like three days. Found out that the roommate had COVID.
Oh gosh.
Then came back, sent him back home again. So now he's quarantined for fifteen days or whatever.
Oh my God.
Now he probably got to go back again, but you know, it's just. Jerry's daughter has her dorm to herself. Has a room to, you know, room to herself.
Wow. Well, Matt and Brian went to Fort Wilderness to Walt Disney World over Labor Day weekend and they had the whole place to themselves. There, the band was playing just for that.
If there's some part, part.
Yeah, no.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, this meeting is being conducted virtually once again. It is being broadcast on cable channels Verizon thirty and Comcast twenty-two. It's also being live streamed through our website, W W W dot Middletown Buckstock org and also live stream on our YouTube channel at Middletown Bucks. Members of the public will be given opportunity to provide comment after each agenda item and also at the end of the meeting during the uh, public comments section to provide a comment. You can just, uh, join the Zoom meeting, uh, via our website. Mr. Tosti, would you please call roll?
Ms. Strauss.
Here.
Ms. Corporal.
Here.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Kezak.
Here.
We also have our accountship manager, our accountship solicitor, our township engineers and our department heads.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. Um, a few announcements and special items. First, the next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, September twenty-first at seven P M. Um, in addition, we have a proclamation. This is Emergency Preparedness Month. And I'm gonna read the proclamation and then we will have our fire marshal, Jim McGuire, to say a few words. Uh, whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Middletown Township to prepare their homes, businesses and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every Middletown citizen and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority by working together to ensure that individuals, families and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas all citizens of Middletown Township are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities and as to visit the Ready Campaign at ready.gov and become more prepared. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Middletown Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, that September two thousand and twenty be designated as National Preparedness Month. Um, and we have again our fire marshal, Jim McGuire. Mr. McGuire.
Good evening, board and guests. So this month is Disaster Preparedness Month and twenty-twenty has been a quite unusual year for all of us. Um, dealing with COVID, the storms that have come up the coasts. Um, and some of the different things that they're talking about is going to continue with it being a, a very busy hurricane season, a very busy fire season, um, not only out west, but here in Pennsylvania as well. Um, so we're trying to encourage everybody, make sure that you have a plan. So we're trying to encourage everybody, make sure that you have a plan, not just for yourself but your family. That means elderly parents, younger children, and our four-legged families as well with our pets. They also gone through making sure that we have ways to communicate with our family, with our friends. Once an emergency occurs, the circuits tend to get overloaded very quickly. So having an alternative means of communication like texting is really, really important. And setting that system up beforehand, how we're going to do it, what things are going to work, and actually trying at once. Those are the biggest pieces of the plan. I will not take up too much of the time tonight. I thank you very much for taking this proclamation and getting the word out for disaster preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGuire. Next on the agenda, we have another proclamation. This one, recognizing the establishment of the African American Museum of Bucks County at Boone Farm and Middletown Township. And what I would like to do is, we have several distinguished guests with us tonight. And first, I would like to recognize County Commissioner Chair Diane Ellis Marsaglia. Commissioner Marsaglia, would you please say a few words?
Thank you. I'd be happy to. Let me just say real quick, I wanted to give a quick shout out to emergency management, to your police chief, to Stephanie. Thank you so much for everything in the past six months. We've all had to work together, you know, and I live here in Middletown, so I'm really watching what's going on, and it's been a joy to work with all of you. The next thing is more exciting. I can't quite believe that we have been able to do this, but many of us all drive to St. Mary and pass St. Mary, and we see that attractive old farm's house up on the side. It's the green one, if you're not remembering where we are, and everybody wonders what it is. And that's the Boone Farm, and I learned all about it when I became a Commissioner 12 years ago. And what I was told was that Mike Fitzpatrick had always wanted to develop the Boone Farm, to bring it back to its history, but it was something that he didn't get to accomplish while he was a Commissioner. So I kind of held on to it and have been hoping something would happen at some point. Meanwhile, I met Linda Sally, who you'll get to speak with in a moment, and Linda told me about how they had started an African American museum, but they were actually, you know, taking it on the road and going places in their cars, which this is a big county to be able to do that. But as luck would have it, we kept running into each other and then that we were able to offer the Boone Farm as the African American Museum right here in Middletown Township. So I will let Linda tell you a little bit about it, and then Bernard Greigs, who is our Projects and our Diversity Officer, who will be working with us to make sure that this comes to be, and it will certainly be a jewel of Middletown and something that all of you. So if it's okay, I'd like to introduce Linda Sally. Hi Linda. You're on mute. Linda, wait a minute, you're on mute. Can you guys unmute her?
You just have to unmute yourself. If you hover over your picture.
Okay.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, everyone. It's nice to be here this evening, and I am very excited about the fact that the Commissioners have donated and selected us to have Boone Farm. It's a big history with the African Americans that I learned many years ago. And to be honest, like Diane said, we have been traveling from Upper Bucks all the way to Lower Bucks. We've been in Quaker Town, we've been in Dolls Town, we've been all over Bucks County, teaching and exhibiting our museum to those who wanted to hear the history of African Americans in Bucks County. We also focus on the hidden figures of Bucks County, and one of the hidden figures was Boone Farm. When Diane told me about it, it really shocked me because I didn't know where Boone Farm was. And many years ago, when I retired from the Board of Education, I met these 12 extraordinary women that wanted to learn how to quilt. And all they talked about was Boone Farm. I said, oh, that's nice. And they told me their stories of how they came up from the South. And as they were talking, I realized, I said, oh, they're talking about the Great Migration because they came up during the 40s and the 50s. And I moved here in the early, I'm gonna say the late 70s. And they were talking about their children and grandchildren and how they settled right there in this little area called the Terrace. And I says, oh, that's really nice, you know, and they were there to really make a better life for themselves. So I forgot about it. We went on, and it's amazing how everything comes to a full circle. And Diane says, Linda, we're going to give you the farm. I says, oh, that's nice. She says, it's Boone Farm. I said, Boone Farm? You talking about Boone Farm? She said, yes, Boone Farm. I said, do you know the story about Boone Farm? She said, no, I don't know the story. I said, well, let me tell you about the story about Boone Farm. And we went on from there, and I told her, like I told you, that so many families had came out of the South looking for a safe haven, and they settled right here in Bristol to raise their children and to have a better life. And to tell you the stories, it would bring tears to your eyes about the fear that they was running from and what they had to endure to come this far, and how many cars that came this way. But it was such an exciting experience, but I never knew where Boone Farm was. And when Diane told me, my heart just melted. I says, I definitely am happy to have Boone Farm because that is part of our history. And I want to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to have that. And that we'll be able to show these exhibits and show pictures of these ladies that told these wonderful stories because most, I think there's only one lady left that's alive today. I think it's Maddie Kitchen. She may be alive, but most of them have passed on. But I have pictures of those ladies. I have their quilts, stories, and it's just amazing because that will be part of one of the exhibits that will be on display at the museum once it's renovated. And I thank you again.
Thank you. And then I'd like to just let Bernard Greigs, our Project and Diversity Officer, speak for a moment. We went in there together. Parts of that building are from 1716, so there's a lot of history. But Bernard, we're going to be able to restructure that building and make it safe, right? You are muted too.
Absolutely, Commissioner. And thank you for having me tonight. And I have to tell you, every time I hear the story that Linda tells of how she hooked up with Commissioner Marsaglia and how we got to the point in time we are in terms of working on this project here, it just, I'm excited as I am the first time I heard it. It's just really cool. But as the Project and Diversity Officer for the County, it's my project to make sure that we get this thing built and get it built right. And we're looking forward to it. I mean, you know, it's a complete retrofit. So when I say built, I mean, it's basically construction from the beginning to me. But we're just looking forward to this, to be able to give the African American Museum of Bucks County a home, to not have to rove around anymore. It's just, it's just really great stuff. So we're excited. We're looking forward to it. I want to thank Middletown Township and all your leadership there for helping make this happen along with the Commissioners. And we're looking forward to working in partnership with everybody involved to make this thing a reality. So thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, and thank you all for embracing it. We will, you know, make a little plea here for some help with permits and stuff like that. But thank you for letting us talk about it. Do you have any questions for anybody?
I don't have any questions. Any of the Board members have questions for any of our guests?
I know it's early days. I just wanted to say congratulations on securing the facility and ask if you had any sense of timeline. I know my children attend Pearl Buck Elementary, and they have been the beneficiaries of seeing the traveling portion of the museum and came home so excited with little trinkets that you provided them. So I'm really excited for more youth to have the opportunity to tour through something more permanent, and I know you'll make it really thoughtful. Is there any sense of timeline of when we may be able to visit a refurbished and permanent Boone Farm African American exhibit?
Bernard, can you help us on that one?
We're looking toward the latter part of '21. Late summer, early fall is the estimated timeframe. Maybe sooner.
The water and sewer, and by the way, Bucks County Water and Sewer donated that, so we were able to get that hooked up, so.
I was going to say the same thing that Amy said. I wanted to congratulate you and ask when it was going to be. So that was a good answer. And Bernard, we've worked in the past together. And if there's anything that I can do to help with this, I will lend a hand and do whatever we can do to make sure this is a smooth project and something that our whole county can enjoy.
Thank you, Tom. Likewise.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Marsaglia. Thank you, Bernard and Linda, for being here. And on behalf of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, I just want to say that we are absolutely thrilled and honored that the African American Museum will have a home here in our township, and we're really excited about that. So, thank you. So if I can, I'd like to read a proclamation on behalf of the Board. Whereas the African American Museum of Bucks County was established in 2014 to honor the legacy of the African American experience, heritage, and journey in the county of Bucks and beyond. And whereas Boone Farm was first established in the Township of Middletown in the year 1716, located at 910 East Bridgetown Pike at the intersection of Bridgetown Pike and Langhorne Newtown Road, and features the Godfrey Kirk House and a Stone Barn Foundation listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas Boone Farm was a local landmark of the Great Migration, affording many African Americans fleeing the South in search of a better opportunity for their families, the opportunity to work on the farm and earn a living. And whereas the County of Bucks acquired Boone Farm in August of 2000 in an effort to preserve its history and significance. And whereas on September 2nd, 2020, the County of Bucks authorized a lease agreement of Boone Farm to the African American Museum of Bucks County for the purpose of establishing a museum to spread awareness of the history of African Americans in Bucks County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Middletown Township and the County of Bucks and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania recognizes the decision to house the African American Museum of Bucks County at Boone Farm. We commend the Bucks County Commissioners for their leadership. We proudly join the African American Museum of Bucks County in celebrating this historic achievement for their organization and welcome them as a permanent member of our community. But once again, welcome. Thank you. We are honored. We are thrilled. And Commissioner Marsaglia, I think we can probably do something with the permits.
Thank you.
Thank you all again for being here.
Thanks. Take care.
Thank you.
We'll see you there.
Absolutely. Okay, well, moving on from that exciting news, we have the Consent Agenda Items. Item A, Consideration of Authorizing Payment of September 8th, 2020 Bill List in the amount of $1,204,396.98. Item B, Consideration of Approving the August 24th, 2020 Minutes of the Public Meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. And Item C, Consideration of Approving the Final Payment Release for Marketplace at Oxford Valley Land Development, 2339 East Lincoln Highway Target Shopping Center. Is there a motion on the Consent Agenda Items? Mr. Tosti.
I'll make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda Items as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any Board questions? Are there any questions from the public? And as we've been doing, I'll just pause momentarily to give members of the public the opportunity to comment on this agenda item if they wish to. Seeing no public comments, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Next on the agenda, Consideration of Enacting Ordinance Number 20-06 Establishing the Human Relations Commission. What I'd like to do is have Supervisor Payne, if she wouldn't mind, speak briefly about the creation of the Human Relations Commission in Middletown Township.
Thank you. I'm just very excited. I think it's pretty unique that it's also happening on the same night that we're talking about the African American Museum coming to Middletown. So I'm glad we were able to edit it and make the HRC stronger and have it be on this same night of the proclamation for the museum. It's all very fitting. I think this HRC is gonna give the members of our community a voice and a seat at the table who have often maybe been disenfranchised or discriminated against. And just because something may not be happening and you don't see it, doesn't mean it's actually not happening. So I think this is a proactive thing. I hope that, you know, the council will be able to work together to create some trainings and community events so that not only are we educating folks about different policies or procedures or diversity training to make people feel more welcome and to help educate people about their own biases possibly that they have. So I think this is going to be a really great step, and I'm pretty sure we're only one of two townships now in the whole county that will have a council. And I was really excited to see that the state got involved as well to help strengthen it and make sure that we're doing the right thing for the first time. And if there is a problem, we'll be able to resolve it the right way, and things will be able to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. I appreciate that. Mr. Esposito, do you want to speak just briefly about where we are and how we got here and what the commission will look like?
Sure. As Ms. Payne mentioned, so this ordinance is going to establish a local human relations commission under the Pennsylvania Humans Relations Act, which is a statute which makes unlawful discriminatory practices, you know, in employment, housing, public accommodation. I started talking about it with Ms. Payne and Mr. Kezak a couple of months ago. And we drafted it, and as Ms. Payne mentioned, we actually got contacted by the state, the Chair of the State Commission. He reviewed the ordinance for us. And just so everyone knows, the one change that he suggested was when we created the commission and enforcing the discriminatory complaints, one of the things that we established was trying to have a fact-finding investigation. His recommendation was actually that we just have mediation. As local commissions usually don't have the resources to do full fact-finding investigations, which after speaking with them, I completely agreed with. In more complex situations, what we would do is actually probably recommend some of those cases get referred to the State Human Relations Commission if it's a little bit more in-depth and complex than we can handle. But it's a, he was very, very complimentary and loved the idea of what we were doing. And one other thing that I want to mention that Ms. Payne had suggested that we do is the commission is actually going to be made up of our existing Disabled Advisory Commission. So we actually have most of the Board already in place. So it has been properly advertised, and if the Board is so inclined, it can make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Ms. Payne, do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the Ordinance 20-06 Establishing the Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Tosti.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any Board questions? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none.
You do have one. You have one hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Comment is coming in. Give me one moment. Are they being let in? Because I don't see them.
Yes, they're coming in now.
Thanks. Yes, hello. If you can, please state your name and address.
Oh, hi. Amando Karascola from Langhorne, Pennsylvania. I reviewed your proposed ordinance. Number one, it was difficult to find it located online, even though it indicated it was put out for the public to view. I only got a chance to look at it today because it was sent to me from the manager's office. The only concern I have, I have two major concerns. In the PHRC, it doesn't identify the protected classes that are going to be considered for complaints to be filed, such as race, gender, sex, or even age. So maybe there should be something in there that indicates, rather than to save space on definitions and so forth, that it mirrors or is exactly as Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. And reading further on it, if the matter can't be resolved, then the person is encouraged to file a complaint with PHRC, but there's nothing in there that they But there's nothing in there that they can suggesting that they should file with EEOC, the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission. As well. Cause most people usually dual file and one of the agencies decides if they do a fact finding and they're gonna go further. Whether they're gonna take the case and sue or give the person a right to suit letter to go to common pleas court. The other thing I'm concerned about is the period that you have allocated since you won't be doing fact finding. That will be remediation and discussion and so forth. I'm concerned that if this person isn't told to file right away, the moment he files with Middletown. That they should file with EEOC and PHRC. That their time, their allotted time for filing, which I think is a hundred and eighty days for one agency. And ninety days for the other can be eaten away with Middletown Township doing remediation.
Just to, to address that last, that last part in particular, speaking with the Chair of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. And this is actually gonna be more of a procedural thing as opposed to having it in the ordinance. Is we are going to recommend to everyone that files a complaint with us to simultaneously file. Their complaint with the State Human Relations Commission. So they have, they do meet all the guy, the, the day's requirements, the timing requirements. Because as you said, they do need to go through both in order to file court complaint after the fact. If, if mediation does not work. So yes, we are gonna actually recommend that they, they dual file with both places.
Okay.
And, and I'm not sure, there, we do actually have in the ordinance, the specific classes that you mentioned. And it also refers back to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, which specifically mentions them. Our ordinance adds another class as well with the sexual orientation and gender identity in addition.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Karasquilo. Are there any other public comments on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Carrie's five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, consideration of enacting ordinance number twenty dash zero seven, adopting the two thousand and fifteen Property Maintenance Code. Before I turn it over to Mr. Esposito, I just want to comment on this agenda item briefly. Only because we've gotten a lot of questions about it over the last few days. And so I just want to clarify a few things. What, what the proposed agenda item would do is replace the two thousand and three Property Maintenance Code. Which is currently being utilized in the township with the newer version, which went into effect in two thousand and fifteen. I'll let, again, Mr. Esposito talk about specifics, but I think from the perspective of residents, the change is gonna be de minimis, probably not even noticeable. There's been some concern about the township may begin enforcing things they weren't enforcing before or enforcing things in a different manner. From a practical standpoint, there really is not gonna be any change in terms of how the township enforces its property maintenance code. The way this works now and the way it would continue to work if this item passes and we move over to the two thousand and fifteen version is. Simply if there's a complaint made, our code enforcement officer goes out and specs the property. If a code violation is found, they will speak with the resident and ask them to correct it, to come into compliance with the code. If the resident doesn't, it can lead to citations and ultimately can end up before the district justice. And that does happen from time to time, although it's a pretty rare occurrence in Middletown. And if there are extenuating circumstances that are making it difficult for the resident to bring the property into compliance. Our code enforcement officer and our building and zoning department always work with residents. This idea that, you know, township employees are gonna be going around randomly inspecting properties is, it just doesn't happen. It's not going to happen. We wouldn't even have the resources to do that, even if it was something that, you know, seemed plausible. So. I know there's been a lot of questions about this and I'll let Mr. Esposito talk about it, but really all we are doing with this ordinance is moving from an old version of the code. To a more newer version of the code. And candidly, this newer version is already in use all over the country, including by a number of municipalities in our area. So nothing earth shattering going on here, but Ms. Esposito, can you just talk for a minute about why? It's your recommendation that we moved to the two thousand and fifteen version and what differences, if any, there are that might be important for residents to know about?
You kind of said, they're really, the revisions between the two thousand and three International Property Maintenance Code and the, and the two thousand and fifteen are minimal. Most of them are actually, there's not even too many substantive changes. It is just, it is just a good idea to update it every few, every few years. We've actually, right, waited a little bit too long. One of the reasons that it is suggested to change is it's easier to find the two thousand and fifteen version online for residents as opposed to the two thousand and three version. Also, we've gotten commented a few different times from the local district justices. That they would prefer that we have the updated version because it's easier for them to, to look into as well. The International Property Maintenance Code is, it's just a standard, it sets forth minimum maintenance standards. And almost all of the municipalities in Pennsylvania and throughout the country have adopted it. And the ones that haven't have to create their own property maintenance code, which can be extremely tedious. And what we do here is with the international code. I actually sat down with the Director of Building and Zoning, Assistant Director of Building and Zoning and the Code Enforcement Officer. To actually, you know, change some of the provisions that Middletown itself specifically does. And that, it's actually the same as they've been enforcing for the last seventeen years. A couple minor thing blanks weren't included in the last one, like the, the length of weeds. That the code enforcement officer would, would enforce that. It really is not gonna be changing anything of what the township is doing. It's just making it easier for people to find the code to reference.
Thank you very much. If any other board members have questions for Mr. Esposito about this, otherwise we can certainly accept a motion to enact this ordinance.
I just want to clarify. So this isn't gonna be like an HOA for the township. We're not gonna require anybody to have, you know, some color paint on their houses. Certain mailboxes or anything like that. This is literally just updating a current policy.
Absolutely. It's, 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 it's just updating what we already do. It's going for the basic property maintenance. So you don't have to live next to someone who has grass that's twenty inches high. Or safety issues with the foundation of, of the property. It's not, we're not, you know, requiring different color paint colors or anything like that. It's just property maintenance situations that I, I think most people on the township would agree is, is needed. To make sure they're living in a safe and healthy community.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to enact the ordinance twenty dash oh seven, adopting the two thousand and fifteen Property Maintenance Code.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Strauss. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. Oh, we got one.
That one.
I don't know if my video is working. But if you can hear me.
Oh, there we go. We see you.
Hi, everybody.
Can you just state your, your name and your address, please?
Sure. My name is Mary Jane McGlocklin. I live on Kingville Road in Langhorne. Is there any, are there any changes in how the code's enforced? So, cause it, it would seem to be that it's putting some additional layers in inspections and things like that when you go to sell your property. So that's really my core question. Are there any, any changes like that?
I think the answer is no, but Mr. Esposito, do you want to?
No, we're not, we haven't put anything in there about the, the enforcement provisions. What actually Ms. McGlocklin might be referring to, and, and we haven't done anything is you're thinking more of a use and occupancy requirement. Which the township currently does not, not have other than I believe a chimney certification. But that would be if we ever did enforce the use of occupancy certification, that would have to be under a separate, separate ordinance. For requiring inspections prior to a sale. That is not anything that we're doing here with this ordinance.
Yeah, and there's a section, and I can't find it right now because this thing is, I've done my best to try to navigate this document. It does say something about a local, a local inspection. And are you gonna continue to accept inspections from commercial inspectors? You know, when you buy a home, you hire an inspector that comes in. Are you gonna continue to accept those inspections or will it be a secondary township inspection?
Not following the, the exact.
So in other words, when you, when you sell a home, right, you usually have, I mean, most people get some sort of home inspection or some sort of, you know, review of the property. Does the township come in and inspect? Do you do that today?
No, we don't know. That, again, that's for a use and occupancy requirement that that's, that this ordinance doesn't do that. And we do not have that requirement, again, other than what I said was the chimney certification. Which right now the chimney certification is you have to hire an outside chimney company that the township does have certified ones on a list that they will listen to for that. That is a separate, that is a completely separate ordinance if, if ever enacted. That doesn't have to do with the Property Maintenance Code.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public questions or comments? And I'm not seeing any, so there is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing advertisement of the Middletown Township Banking Request for Proposals. And I believe we have our Finance Director, Director Ms. Bandari.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. Yes, as mentioned. You know, as general best management practice, Middletown Township periodically looks at issuing new RFPs. Today, we're recommending that we issue a baking service RFP for commencement of services in January, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm just looking to renew services and look at what's best out there. And we're asking for the board to authorize advertisement of that.
Thank you. Are there any board questions for Ms. Bandari about this RFP?
I don't have a question. I'd just like to make a comment. I, I fully support this idea. Every time we run out to do an RFP. We end up saving our township some money. So I'm hoping that we do the same thing with this RFP. So thanks for the work. And I'll make a motion to consider authorizing the advertisement of the Middletown Township Banking Request for Proposal.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Strauss. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Seeing none. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Thanks, Ms. Bandari.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the discussion of the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority Grant Program. What this is tonight, this is not anything that the board needs to officially vote on or take action on. What we really need to do at this point is look at the requests submitted by the various township departments. And our fire and emergency departments. And also ideally give the township manager a sense of prioritization that she can then take with her. When she makes the proposal to the RDA board. So what I'll do, just for the board, but also for the benefit of the public, I'll read through quickly. The requests that we have received. First, from the Police Department, we have police vehicles totaling two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that is three police patrol explorers, one unmarked police charger and two ATVs. And also a Cell Bright cellphone forensic machine at a cost of eighteen thousand dollars. From the Department of Public Works, we have three vehicles at a total cost of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. These include one international dump truck, one international MV series truck and one Ford utility truck. From the Department of Fire and Emergency Management, we have a request for SCBA equipment at a cost of seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. From the Langhorne Middletown Fire Company, we have also a request for SCBA equipment at a cost of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. From the Parkland Fire Company, a new electrical system for a generator, for their generator, a total cost of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And the William Penn Fire Company, a vehicle exhaust removal system at a cost of forty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. And finally, from the, I just lost it. From the Pendale Middletown Emergency Squad, a Stryker Cat fastening, or cot rather, fastening system at a cost of eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. So again, although no motion is required tonight, we would seek input from the board on hopefully getting some consensus as to. Prioritization of these requests from these departments. So if anybody has any comments or thoughts, I welcome you to share them now.
I mean, I can put in my two cents if you like. I think the police vehicles are very important. And I mean, we've always made them the number one priority. We've been pretty successful in getting them through the RDA grant. So I mean, I would support them being at the top of the list. Not necessarily the ATV. I'm not sure what the cellphone forensic machine is. Maybe the chief can explain that. Is he on tonight or I seen?
The chief is on, but I can just jump in real quick. That's something you guys actually included in this year's capital project. It was one of the items that we deferred. Because of the, of the virus crisis. And the idea was just that we would seek funding from the RDA for it. And that is something that allows police access to, direct, direct access to cellphone information when they're doing an investigation.
Okay, alright. And then, then again, the, the public works. And usually with the, the fire companies, what we normally do is we kind of rotate them in priority. And I'm not sure what we did last year with them. If, if, if Steely Coles can remind us or refresh our memory.
I do know that there was funding given by the RDA. Well, I guess first, the RDA doesn't necessarily always fund based upon our priorities.
Correct.
And so I do know that there was an approved project for Langhorne Middletown Fire Company. That breathing apparatus equipment that they're requesting is a three-year project. And they have it spread, they, they're going to other municipalities as well for that. Nick or Megan, do you want to jump in? Do either of you? I know there was another grant last year. I think it was the Rescue Squad that received funding last year as well.
That's what I thought too.
Okay, well, we're.
I believe you're correct that it was the Rescue Squad.
Okay.
And I, I think Parkland was the year before, correct? Because we did something with a vehicle over there in Parkland prior to that.
When we first started with the RDA grants, we, there was sort of an unspoken rule. That one fire company each year would apply. And it was based upon when we renegotiated our fire service contracts before I got here. There was an apparatus replacement plan. And so one fire company a year had a new piece of equipment and there would only be one fire company application. So I think this is the third year in a row that we've had applications from multiple. I, I know William Penn, I mean, they've all received funding at different times.
So I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Tosti that, you know, prioritizing the police vehicles, followed by the public works vehicles. And I'm certainly on board with this idea of rotating prioritization of the fire companies if you want to keep doing that. And I guess that would seem to make William Penn next in line. Again, I don't know what, how much of a difference any of this makes anyways, because I think the RDA board ultimately does what they want to do in terms of priority, but. But anybody else, Ms. Corporal, Ms. Payne, Ms. Strauss, anybody else have any thoughts about this, or are we good with sort of that scheme?
I'm fine with how it's set up.
I find ways prioritizing the police vehicles. You know, I think we all agree that that's something that needs to be prioritized. As far as the rest, like you said, I, I don't really know if the RDA is going to do what they want anyway, but sure, we can put our, our two cents in and, and try to say, take it in turns.
We do have a little more flexibility than just what order we put them in. We could not submit some of these, right? We could start submitting only our priorities. Is certainly a possibility. The other thing that I'll say we've done in years past is split our top priorities and so indicated to the RDA Board. For example, I agree with Mr. Tosti that I'm unconvinced on the ATV's utility, and so we can split those and put the vehicles. The big vehicles as our first priority, and then the ATVs further down the list if we think that that's something the RDA Board would consider.
And if I could just jump in real quick, the other thing I can do, you, you're going to see this at your next meeting when you actually adopt resolutions. And so I can send you the information about which entities have received RDA grants in the past. And I can, you know, I can establish the priorities based upon that, and you'll still have the final say at the next meeting.
But, but then again, like Ms. Strauss said, we don't have to submit for all them either.
You may, if there are ones that you want us to disclude, absolutely. And you again have the opportunity to decide that at the next meeting, because you're going to, you, there has to be a resolution authorizing application for each grant.
I like that way forward. Let's get a sense of, and I think we did this last year, we got a better sense of the data on which, which of our partner fire companies had been the most. Sort of beneficiaries of this grant program, and then we established our priorities based on that. If we did decide to only submit for. You know, our top priority fire department each year, if we made some sort of decision like that, I would just want to be sure that we clearly communicated to all of partner entities. That we were going to be rotating and that, you know, we will come to their priority in turn. So not saying that is the way that we will go, but just making it clear that whatever we do, we need to be sure that we are clearly communicating what our intent is, and that we're not just leaving someone off the list in order to leave them off.
I agree. I'm sorry, Tom.
One other question, like the, the SCBA equipment that the Emergency Management in Langhorn has. The, the reason that the gap is so big in the two is, is the Emergency Management is trying to do it all in one year where the Langhorn spread it out for three? Is that why?
Yes, the, the Middletown Emergency Management, Fire and Emergency Management is six units. And Langhorn Middletown has had a three-year project, you know, that has been spread out.
Did they get it last year? Did they? Okay, so they're in year two of their three-year?
Correct.
I think they got it the last two years.
They have.
This is the third year.
They have, yes.
Okay, well, I think that's a prudent course. It gives all of us an opportunity to get a little bit more information and mull it over, and certainly any of us are free to talk to any department directors and ask questions, and then we can. Regroup, have a sense as to.
The last thing I'll point out is that last year, the. Emergency Squad had come in with a higher request for the number of units of the item that they were asking for a grant for. And then after hearing and seeing how many priorities we were trying to juggle, they very magnanimously came in and voluntarily lowered their request. Make sure that more departments could, could receive something from the program and also to ensure that they were able to get some of what they were requesting. So we do often have those discussions with the departments after the fact, after this initial discussion, to see if they're willing to ask for a bit less considering how big some of these requests are.
I'm happy to do that.
So is it our plan then to prioritize these at the next meeting and then be ready to submit? Is that moving forward? Okay.
I, I think I'm getting a sense of where the board is. I'll, I'll do a little bit more work individually communicating with the fire companies and the Rescue Squad. Also make sure you all are aware of where the grants have gone in the past. And you'll have the final say at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Okay, moving on. Next agenda item is consideration of authorizing the purchase of playground equipment at Upper Orchard Park for, from. Martorano Recreation Company in the amount of $80,582.28. Mr. Copera.
Good evening. The first thing I'm going to do is share my screen. And. Okay, so let me just, so what, what we're talking about here is Upper Orchard Park. Now, as you know. Most of our playgrounds, we have a lifespan of 15 years. That's for two reasons. First off. Most of the manufacturers, by 15 years, all the warranties on all the various parts have. Run the course of time. The second thing is when you think about the generation of a child, this is probably like through two generations of a child. So somebody that grows up in, in a neighborhood. Been there, done that, so it's good that we get some new playground equipment in there, and then it helps. Energize the community. It also raises property values by seeing these, these improvements. The current, the current playground is two separate pods. There's a playground and a swing set. At that corner of Upper Orchard Drive in Unity Turn, this gets used by Upper Orchard and Juniper residents. I basically start out with the condition of the, the existing playground set, as you see. While it's the, it's, there's a lot of maintenance that has to go on here, so there's a lot of dangerous areas and a lot of. Areas where children can get hurt. So that's one of the things that we look at. These are the swing sets. The other thing about changing up every 15 years or so is there's a lot of advancements with the, with the equipment, so a lot of new fun stuff. Same thing is with cars. A car 15 years ago has a lot of different or lacks a lot of the functionality that a car today has. When you see our color choice, this is the green belt, this is the background for this Upper Orchard, beautiful trees, beautiful greenery, so really a forest setting. So that gets us into the new playground setup, which is a forest color, which is the browns and the greens matching the trees in the green belt area. This is what they call an, a playground set up for two- to five-year-olds. So when I scope out a park. Lot of little children are using the existing playground, so that, that played heavily in my mind. So if you looked at the swing set, they can climb up or down these slides. Some of them are just standard slides, some are climbing. Apparatuses. The flowers in the left corner are musical instruments, and then you have your spring rides. If you look overhead, so one of the things is, we took the two pods, we're going to make them one. It's a lot easier for maintenance, and. We'll go on later, but the swing sets at Firefighters Park, the new style, extremely popular, so we're going to recreate that by doing that here. The other thing that we're doing is we only have one bench around the existing both pods. This bit is going to include the, the benches and trash cans in various locations as part of the process. This is just another, another angle. As you can see, this is a traditional slide, a lot of climbing. Keeping kids busy and just running around. So these are the swing sets at Firefighters Park that were extremely popular. And if you look, this was the ribbon cutting back in last September, and they were just mobbed, so we just want to repeat that with, with some more. Of the same type of equipment. And does anybody have any questions?
I do. The swings, are any of those swings accessible for children with special needs?
Not on this set. So. We have the one at Firefighters Park. The reason why I'm not doing it, that this one is. Cobalt, which is scheduled to get replaced in two years. That's a little bit bigger playground, and that could, and that we could fit one of those in that area.
Thank you.
Okay.
This does not touch the basketball court there. It's just the playground, correct?
Correct, and, and that's a great question. So the reason why I went with a two- to five-year-old playground, and then you have the swings which take care of the five- to 12-year-olds. And then you have the, the basketball court area and that patch of asphalt, you know, down a city block essentially. So everything right in that area is, is, is a great area for the, all the kids to play in one spot.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Copera. If there are no further questions, I will accept the motion. Mr. Tosi.
I'll make a move, I'll move to execute a contract for the purchase and installation of playground equipment for Upper Orchard Park from. Martorano Recreation Company and Coast Stars vendors in the amount of $80,582.28.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? See none? Are there any questions or comments from the public? And I'm not seeing any, so all those in favor say aye.
There is one coming in right now, Mike. I'm sorry.
Every time. Every time. Okay, hold on, we got a question.
We have to take our eyes back.
Yes, sir. I know you were here before, but if you don't mind, if you can, just please state your name and address again for the record.
Armando Carasquela from Langhorn, Pennsylvania. I, I have a question that was drawn up as one of the board members brought up the question about handicap. The decision is made then to exclude those people that may have difficulty playing on the playground or getting on the swing set. Was a study done to see how many handicapped children live in that area? What the population is, and will that population be changing where those kids will be adults soon and not use that? Two- to five-year-old park? Or are we looking at a study done that new families are going to be moving in the area because of, let's say, new real estate? Or so forth that would create a need for a two- to five-year-old park? Where at least handicaps are, are being excluded.
So a lot of questions, so let me unpack them as we go. So it's just a feature, so if, if we determine that it's better that I go with the. The special needs or what they call the adaptive swing, I can easily do that. We put one up at Firefighters Park. It seems to be working well. There was nothing in my visual observation. I didn't notice anybody, so. It's not a thorough study. It's just I drive by various times and watch the activity. The other thing, as far as going with the two to five. So the township has 12 different parks with playgrounds, so we have 12 different playgrounds. Only one in Langhorn is set two to five, and so this is going to be one in Levittown that's going to be two to five years old. And then as far as covering the, the breadth of youth activities, as I stated earlier, so the playground it's set, there's a lot of toddlers right now in Upper Orchard, so. The, the youngsters have the two- to five playground, the older five- to 12s can. Have the swings. Actually, they go beyond 12, and then they also have the tweens and teens have the basketball court. You know, basically right down the green belt. So it's sort of a inclusive covering all ages in that area.
Okay. I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public questions or comments?
Add, so I understand what he's saying, you know. Basically, we feel like that's going to be more toddlers using. I would say though, if we're making new parks, I would really. Prefer them to have at least one, one piece of equipment for people with special needs. You know, you never know when they're going to be there, and that's something that not only special needs children can use, but all children can use that equipment. If we could look into it and, and see if that would be feasible, I would, I would like to consider that.
I can make it identical to Firefighters Park, so there's really nothing. I can do the same thing as Firefighters Park, basically.
And I thought the one at Firefighters Park was, was fantastic.
You can amend your motion if you'd like.
Well, hold on, let me just ask a question. Can I ask a question first? Is that going to change the price, and then does it need to come back before us, or can we, can we pass a motion now, in order, a resolution now? Allowing you to do it with whatever the increase would be.
I mean, if you give me a couple hundred dollars a wiggle room, I think we can make it work, yes.
So how do we do that?
You can amend the motion to add that amenity, not to exceed, and just pick a thousand dollars higher. And it'll be more than enough for him to be able to do that within the Coast Stars bid. Jim, do you agree?
I would suggest that you do exactly that, as long as he doesn't exceed some certain amount.
Got it. Before we do that, there is another resident who has a question or a comment, so ma'am, if you could just please state your name and address. Ms. Lafferty, go ahead.
No, I don't have a question, actually. I didn't raise my hand. I don't think so. Not intentionally, anyway.
Oh, okay.
Actually, you know what, though? Now that you mention it, can I come back on?
Sure, hold on one second. Hold on, let us get you back in. Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead.
So I just have a question going actually, and I'm sorry, going back to the very beginning. Was there an indication or is there a timeline for the museum? And was there a discussion about the traffic? That I'm not aware of, potentially.
Told us, uh, summer of 2021 was their target, is what I heard.
Okay.
And I, to your second question, I don't believe there were any questions or discussion regarding traffic.
It is a small facility, though. I mean, so, you know, we can certainly ask our traffic engineer to look at it, but if you've driven past there, it's not.
I live right next door. Yeah.
I don't think it's going to accommodate dozens of tour buses or anything like that, so I don't, I don't think it's going to be.
Are they using both houses or the main house or? There's two houses on the property.
There was, there was reference to both of them, but I'm not sure, and I don't know if they know for sure yet. I think this is, I mean, literally was just approved by the county. And, and authorized by us, so I don't believe there's been any planning or design that's even happened yet.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll be lots of opportunity to continue to follow the planning and, and permitting stage of the project over the next year.
Yeah, I mean, just, just be living right there. It's next to impossible to make a left onto 413. It's almost a similar, similar argument to the Stone Meadows, which is on the opposite side. Of the same neighborhood, so. Okay, thank you.
Well, feel free to check in with any of us at any time as this project progresses, and we'll be happy to keep you posted on things and. Accept any feedback or questions that you have. Okay, so are there any other questions or comments from the public on this agenda item which concerns the playground apparatus? And I'm not seeing any, so would anybody like to make an amended motion as per the discussion that we just had?
I, I will move to execute a contract. I will amend my original motion, and I will move to execute a contract for the purchase and installation of a playground equipment for Upper Orchard Park from Martorino. Recreation Company and Coast Stars vendors, not to exceed. The amount of over a thousand dollars of $80,582.28. Is that good?
Good? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? And are there any questions or comments from the public on this amended motion?
There is one coming in now.
Okay. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Sal. I'm from Levittown.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
What does the township do with the old equipment that'll be removed?
We recycle them with a metal recycler.
Is there any chance for public to purchase that and the money to go towards the new equipment?
We can only actually sell things through bidding or an auction.
Municipal bid, right.
Yeah, so if we were to sell it, we would have to, you know, put an advertisement and accept sealed bids, or we would have to use an online bidding process, municipal, as Mr. Copera mentioned. Unfortunately, we're not able to direct sell things like that to our residents, although, you know, the concept is, is a good one to underwrite the cost. Paul, do you have any idea what the value of those items will be?
No, I mean, we generally end up just scrapping them as metal, so whatever the cost of the metal is on the weight, so. What usually happens, yeah.
It's not something that would probably generate any interest. We're getting rid of it because of safety concerns, so other municipalities might not, bid on it or folks bid on it because of that.
Correct. Basically, we never take anything that's secondhand because of the same reasons you said. You gotta, you still have to install it, you still have to put concrete in the ground, you still have to do all that. And at the end of the day, you don't have the warranty that comes with the new stuff, so. What, can we?
I think the short answer is that's not something we've done before or something we thought about doing, and it sounds like it would be, more onerous of a process than would be worthwhile relative to the amount of revenue that it would generate from the sale. And I think there is a genuine concern, at least I have a genuine concern, selling an item that we have our own safety concerns about, that somebody else would then go use. So, I think the short answer, Mr. D'Amico, is that that's not something that we're considering doing.
All right, thank you, board.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions in the public on this agenda item? I'm not seeing any. Nick's not saying anything. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Thank you, Mr. Copera.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing the advertisement to solicit bids for the Langhorne Gables Drainage Improvement Project, and we have Mr. Kessler. Mr. Kessler.
Thank you, Chairman Kechak, and I'll share my screen here to add some visual to our project here. We've put before the board tonight the Langhorne Gables Drainage Improvement Project. It's a project that's a few years in the making here. The Langhorne Gables, as you know, is a lower lying area of the township. It's a very flat area with its topography. The neighborhoods, when they were constructed, really didn't have much in the way of storm sewer infrastructure, meaning storm pipes, inlets, that kind of system relies mostly on just overland flow to get to local creeks and streams. So, what's been observed over time is that this area in particular has water that just isn't able to get to the stream, winds up pooling up in yards and in areas where this project intends to capture that, get it moving, and with the intent of improving the flood mitigation and then storm events that cause issues in the neighborhood. We've split into two parts, a base bid and an alternate bid, with the goal that we can award both when the bids come in, but realizing that, if for some reason bids for the second part come in very high, we still have the option of definitely moving forward with the base bid. And this also has come to the board tonight because we were in receiving a PA Small Sewer and Water Grant to the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is intended for this project, and that's gonna go a long way, and hopefully taking care of the project costs. If there's a balance above and beyond that with the alternate bid included, we're working with township staff to make sure that's considered with the budget line item, which has been in our storm projects for the last year or two, and is intended to be in the budget again for this year coming up. So the base bid, as you can see, it starts along the Paper Street, which is between Fernwood Ave. and Cypress Avenue. That's referred to as Glen Side Avenue. It'll go along Cypress, make a left and go along Longview, an outlet to Bunwood Avenue, which connects to the stream through this area. The alternate bid is to address an undersized pipe culvert that's underneath Willow Avenue, and also the downstream section that's observed to have some safety concerns. So just to show some visual, I'm sure the residents in this neighborhood will say these pictures don't do it justice, but the one on the left shows this Glen Side Avenue, Paper Street area. You can see the pooling water as we're out there during a few rain events over the last year or two. To the right shows Longview Avenue between Cypress and Bunwood. You can see there's really no inlets, curbs, that kind of system. It's really just relying on water to get from point A to point B in this flat area, which isn't always the case. So we're looking with this project to construct that infrastructure, to get the water moving, and to have it, you know, move towards that stream and out of any kind of area that could cause property damage. The alternate bid, just to show the culvert that we're talking about, it's this pipe culvert shown in the center photo there, that middle pipe. The pipe to the left there is a lot of area coming in to that same spot. And the aerial on the left shows that drainage area that all comes to that point. And it even includes most of the school on the other side of Trenton Road. So it's really taking a good amount of water, and what happens is it just can't all fit through that opening to get downstream. And what happens is it backs up on the upstream side, causes issues there. We're looking to replace that pipe with a four by three foot box culvert. That should increase enough of that capacity to alleviate some of those concerns upstream and also not cause too much. We don't want to cause a new issue downstream by letting too much through at once. So that, with studies we've done, looks to be the balance that we're looking for to improve the situation there. Downstream, the photo on the right, you can see the boardwalk structure, which is not a typical covering of a stream. That is currently in a failing status with like timber supports for the stream bank. So we're looking to remove that boardwalk structure, replace the embankment stabilization with something that's more stabilized, and also improve just the water coming downstream there, and address some of the concerns with the safety that's currently there now. So with that, the project at this point is ready to move towards the bidding phase. Tonight, we ask for authorization to advertise for the bidding. And as that process moves forward, hopefully the, as I mentioned, the bids come in that we are able to award both parts of this project to improve this area as we move over the next couple of months. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I have a question, Mr. Kessler. The, we, I think it was last year or the year before, we went in there and we just repaved the roads there in Langhorne Gables. Will we have to go in and rip them roads up in order to do this project, or will it be running on the side of the roads?
It's designed to run along the sides of the roads. So right now, I mentioned the water kind of comes off the road and has these roadside swales that it's intended to move down. The inlets and pipes would be in that roadside area, so it wouldn't be tearing up the pavement along the whole stretch there. There'll be some repaving at that intersection with Cypress and Longview where it'll kind of make a turn there. And the intent is for the contractor to, so it's a new pavement area there, not just a pipe trench. So, we'll look to, you know, repaint the area to bring it back to a good condition.
Now, and then with the head wall on the alternate bid one, it looked like there was three pipes. Is that the inlet part of it, or is that the outlet part that they're all coming out there with the three pipes?
Those three, they're all going in. So the one on the left there, that's the larger one coming, and that's from Trenton Avenue and the school. There's a good amount of water that comes in that direction. There's looking, but there would be the swell that comes between the properties, kind of per, or the Willow Avenue. And the one from the right there that's sticking out, that's an inlet that's just probably about twenty-five feet away or so in Willow Avenue. That just comes off the road and down into that culvert. It would be replaced with the four by three culvert. That doesn't bring nearly as much water as kind of the other two intakes there. But all that's being considered when it's, when eyes a little larger to take that all for that opening.
And that, and that'll alleviate like any flooding or anything right there in that culvert area then too, with backups?
Yeah, that swells a good size, so it's designed to hold a good amount of water. What's happening now is that during these larger events that we've all become familiar with recently, it'll back up all the way up to the point where the residents there have observed it coming all the way up towards almost their home elevation, you know, the kind of their front steps. That's caused by just, there's not enough capacity in that thirty-six inch pipe to through. So the four by three box, studies we did of that whole drainage area, that's better designed for a more frequent storm now. If we get a huge storm, we'll still see kind of some backup there, but also with that, we'll have an opening that'll let it more efficiently than that there now that's just undersized.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Ms. Strauss.
I make a motion to authorize the advertisement to solicit bids for the Langhorne Gables Drainage Improvement Project.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any other board questions at this time? I think none. Are there any questions or comments from the public? I'm not seeing any, but I don't trust my screen. Nick, anything coming in?
You're clear.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have consideration of authorizing the purchase of one two thousand and twenty T, fourteen T deck over tilt towmaster trailer for a total of sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Mr. Garden Meyer.
Good evening, board. I'm asking for your blessing here to get a trailer, which is needed for our skid steer trailer. Currently, we have a two thousand and four, which needs to be replaced. The skid steer trailer is used every day almost, or every other day. And it's something that, I apologize that when Stephanie asked me last time, I didn't put it on the list with the other pieces of machinery I needed. So, it would be a great asset. The other trailer will not be inspected again. We cannot use it after this coming up inspection.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any of the board members for Mr. Garden Meyer? And if not, we can take a motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of one twenty twenty T fourteen T deck over tilt towmaster trailer from Scotty in New Jersey for a total of sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I think Ms. Payne got it in first. We got a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Nick, just let me know when I'm clear.
You're clear.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Thank you, Mr. Garden Meyer.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing the purchase of a two thousand and twenty Ford Explorer to replace a twenty fifteen Chevrolet Tahoe that was totaled during Tropical Storm Isaias. I'm sure we have the chief here, but this is the vehicle, the police vehicle, that was crushed during the recent tropical storm that was totaled. And so this would just be to replace that vehicle, and I understand maybe Ms. Tealie Coles can confirm that the insurance money is gonna cover most of the acquisition cost. Is that accurate?
In fact, all but two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars, which would come out of the capital fund.
Okay, is there a motion, Ms. Strauss?
I move to authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty Ford Explorer from CNC Ford in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Tosti got it in first. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Nick, say when.
You're clear.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Next on the agenda, we have the twenty twenty-one budget calendar. Ms. Tealie Coles, you want to tell us about the upcoming budget calendar?
Sure, thank you, Chairman Kezak. The budget schedule, it's this time of the year that we talk about the budget calendar. In October, we have one board meeting, and then we have two budget workshop meetings. So this year, our first budget workshop will be on October nineteenth. Our second budget workshop will be on October twenty-seventh. We typically start those a little bit early. I will note that because it is a single subject meeting, just the budget, rather than a board meeting like this with a bunch of consultants and other folks presenting, we are going to do this in person. And we will be able to, you know, accommodate the twenty-five person limit. That's, you know, the primary reason we're meeting online right now. We've got twenty-two people in the panel right now before any residents. So for the budget workshop, we will accommodate and make sure that we have social distanced spaces for the board to discuss the budget and social distance spaces for the public as well. If all goes well, we would present the first draft of the twenty twenty-one preliminary budget on November sixteenth. And then that would allow the board to have, to consider approving it on the December twenty-first meeting. The first, or the second class township code requires you to approve it before the end of the year. So, we have a tiny bit of wiggle room to do that, but really, the directors are, have all submitted their budgets on Monday. I guess, almost, you know, next Monday, the fourteenth, we are gonna be, Mega and I will be meeting with the individual departments to really start digging in, and you all will get to see things, and the public will get to see things beginning at our budget workshop. So, happy to answer any questions. But otherwise, we'll just keep working on it.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Tealie Coles? Yeah, Mr. Tosti.
Not really a question, but I thought I heard you say the second budget workshop is October twenty-seventh, but it's actually the twenty-sixth.
It is the twenty-sixth. I'm sorry if I said the twenty-sixth. They're Mondays.
Right.
The fifth, the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth.
Catch.
And so, for public participation, we will be able to accommodate some certain number of residents. Usually, we have a single-digit number of residents that come to that, those presentations. And so anticipating a normal flow of residents, we would be able to accommodate everyone in person. I assume we will be requiring face masks while together in the building. And in the event that we have an influx of people, what is the contingency plan? I have two questions. What is the contingency plan for accommodating more people than we planned for? And two, if someone is not comfortable joining us in person, will they be able to maybe email any comments in advance or somehow participate in the process without joining us in person?
So, to your first question, we have thought about that. And what we'll do is we'll set up, most likely downstairs in a larger room. We'll have socially distanced chairs, but we'll also. We'll have socially distanced chairs, but we'll also be prepared, should we have a huge turnout, that we would be able to move people to an overflow room and, you know, set some type of video conference up. We will definitely heavily promote the workshops, and we will encourage folks that aren't comfortable to get in touch with us. And that way, we'll be able to get their feedback to the board for the workshops.
And if I remember correctly, the flow of this is that there is a long period of time where the budget is posted publicly, where anyone can view it on the website and make comments. So even if they are not able to join us in person, we can incorporate their comments and feedback at some point during the process, maybe just not live during one of these.
Yes, we have, we have board meetings throughout all of this. So you have, we'll be presenting it on the sixteenth of November. You guys will authorize advertisement, and it has to be publicly available for twenty days before you vote on it. We, we, you won't be voting on it until December twenty-first. So on the seventeenth of November, it will be available at the Township Building. It'll be posted on our website, and folks will have all of that time between the sixteenth and the twenty-first. In addition, there's a board meeting on December seventh. If there was some large concern, folks would be able to come to that meeting and express their feedback as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike appears to be hopefully temporarily frozen. I don't think we need a motion on this item though, correct?
No motion, no motion is necessary.
Okay. Be back with us, Mr. Kezak.
I am. Thank you. All right, and I don't see any public questions, so we will move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment on non-agenda items. We'll wait a moment to see if we have anybody.
There's one coming in now.
Great. Thanks.
Hello again, Armando Carasquillo from Langhorne, Pennsylvania.
Yes, Mr. Carasquillo. Go ahead.
The, the comment that the gentleman brought up about buying the playground equipment, I understand that the board is not accustomed to that. It's something probably that hasn't been done ever. But I think we owe it to the taxpayers to bring in revenue whichever way we can. I'm sure Mr. Esposito can come out with some kind of contract where anyone purchasing used items from the township would sign a release holding the township harmless on that product. I would also want the board to consider, you know, when I see these large numbers, a hundred thousand dollars for equipment, eighty thousand dollars for this, I mean, that's money that's really going, and sometimes buying new is not the best option. You go to look at a car today, you could buy a car that was leased for six months, take it, it has a warranty, and if you want an extended warranty, you can buy that. I just would want the board to consider in their meetings discussing that, and especially the part about selling used equipment. When I hear it's going to be shredded, when someone can actually use it and is willing to pay for it, and the board says no, I, I just don't find that right. It doesn't sit well with me.
Well, if I could just, what I mentioned earlier, which I'll just draw attention to again, is the law doesn't allow us to direct sell. We, we don't have that option. And we do, any equipment that has useful life to it, we sell on an online bidding platform for municipal governments. And so if we, you know, if we have a, a vehicle that is going out of service, if we have a piece of equipment that's going out of service, we do always try to obtain revenue. We just aren't legally permitted to direct sell to anyone. You know, I think we're allowed to give things to fire companies and ambulance squads. We're allowed to enter into agreements with other municipalities, but we are not permitted to, you know, take something and, and sell it directly.
Also, on the ordinances, when you say on your minutes that you advertise an ordinance, where are those ordinance advertised?
We, we advertise our ordinance, I'm sorry, we advertise our ordinances in the, the Courier Times. We have them at the Township Building, and they're at the Bucks County Law Library as well. Did I forget anything, Jim?
But no place online where someone could pick it up?
I think we might start putting them online since we've gotten some questions. One of the supervisors mentioned that earlier, so I, I think that's probably a great idea.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comment on non-agenda items?
There's no other hands raised.
Yeah, I don't see any. Okay, great. So at that point, we will move on to other business. Mr. Tosti.
I have nothing, Mr. Kezak. I would just like to comment and just tell everybody to continue being safe. We're doing really good here in Pennsylvania, and we can keep moving forward, and sooner or later, we're going to get out of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Strauss?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corporal?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I didn't say earlier, I had an opportunity a couple of months ago, I guess, a while, last year, to go to one of the meetings for the African American Museum. At the time, they were looking for a permanent place, and I'm so happy that they found that here in Middletown, and I want to thank the Commissioners for making that happen and congratulate them. We're excited.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Payne?
I just wanted to actually answer someone's question from earlier about the museum itself, if they would be utilizing two buildings or one. They're only going to be using, utilizing the larger building. The other building, they can't utilize. So I hope that helps clear up some information about which building they'll be using.
There you go. Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Tealie Coles?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Esposito?
I have nothing. Thanks.
Mr. Kessler?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have nothing, so I will accept a motion to adjourn. Mr. Tosti? Is there a second? Ms. Corporal, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Good night.
Thank you.